And you're up.
Thank you. Good evening. Any members of the public who wish to attend the meeting may join through the link that can be found on our website under School Committee Notices and Agendas for Upcoming Meetings under tonight's date. Per Governor Baker's Order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via Montague Community Television Broadcast, as well as in our Zoom audience. The extension of the Emergency Open Meeting Law provisions were signed into law as Chapter 20, Section 20 of the Acts of 2021. The School Committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as soon as possible. We have already opened the meeting in executive, in open session before going into executive session. Now we're reconvening in open session. We are live streaming and we are broadcasting as well on MCTV Tonight. And then a recording of the meeting will be available on MCTV and on our GMRSD website. We are welcoming everyone who is watching us at home, as well as our Zoom audience. This would be the time for public participation. It's Policy BDEDH, which has been reinstated to hold, be held remotely. I do not believe we have anyone who's requested that this evening. And we would like to just remind anybody in our Zoom audience, please remember to keep your camera and your microphone off if you are just listening as a member of the audience. Thank you. Okay, important events. That would be Brian.
Mute button.
Yep.
It could have been worse. The sound was terrible the last time I had a meeting. No sound is better than what we were hearing before. I wanted to thank Leslie Cogswell for her work in coordinating the District Elementary School Community Food Drive. I know that there will be students who will also assist her in gathering those items from schools and getting them out into the community. But the food drive is taking place at the elementary schools. There are boxes in each of the front offices from December 6th, started yesterday, through December 17th. Just a reminder that tomorrow, December 8th, is an early release day. Elementary report cards will go home with students on Friday, December 10th. At the high school and middle school, they're doing the, a food drive in a different way, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. But there are two basketball games, one, a girls' game on Monday, December 13th, and a boys' game on Friday, December 17th. And at each of those games, in lieu of a in lieu of paying admission, people can bring non-perishable food items to either one of those games, or they could make a donation. And all of the proceeds will go toward Helping Hands, which is run by Dan Minor and Adam Graves in the Athletic Leadership Council, which is a group of students who will coordinate to put together food baskets with, using the money and any of the food that's donated for those events to get them out to families that might be struggling or having issues getting food in the community. The Pandemic Response Advisory Committee will meet next Wednesday at 4:00. There are two COVID vaccine clinics, one Thursday, December 16th, at Hillcrest Elementary School, 3:30 to 5:30, and one at Gill Elementary School. I wanted to thank Melissa Bednarski and Dean Singer, who is our school physician. At each of those clinics, they'll have all three of the vaccines, Pfizer, Moderna, and Johnson &amp; Johnson. And then Pfizer COVID Vaccine Clinic with the Vax Bus will be back at Sheffield for second shots or for boosters from Monday, December 20th, from 1:30 to 5:30. Wednesday, December 2nd, December 22nd is also an early release day. And then on December 23rd, there's no school as holiday vacation begins. I also wanted to note that last night, and say thank you to John Carter, 12 Turner's Falls High School students were inducted into the National Honor Society. And I will share the names of those students in my newsletter that will go out to the community tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I believe we have Sina with us to give us the student report.
Hi. I don't have a ton today. Mr. Becker already touched on some of the things I was going to speak on, like the charity basketball games, which I know people are excited for, and the clothing drive, which is kind of a work in progress. We pushed back like the end date an extra week because we needed to extend it due to some complications, finding boxes for each advisory. But I think that should be going well and things are getting worked out now that the custodians on board with us too. Um, we've been discussing some future Spirit Weeks. There was made, there was talk of one happening in January, and there is going to be one happening the week leading up to winter break. I'm not sure of each individual Spirit Day, but I know they're going to be more holiday themed. And so I think that would be a good way to send us off into the break. Um, we were also talking about a snowball dance happening sometime in January. We're still working out the details on that because we can't have a conflict with sports and games and everything. And otherwise, we were talking about Student Council doing like a Yankee swap before the break. But otherwise, I think that's about it.
Okay, Sina, thank you so much.
Thank you, Sina.
All right, thanks a lot.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Going back to Brian's thing, I'm just curious how the students, are the students connecting with community organizations to help in recognizing where food should be distributed and actually distributing it? Or are the kids, or the students, I'm sorry, doing all of this on their own?
Both Dan Minor and Adam Graves, I can find the organization that they might be connected to, or whether or not they might be doing it through the school. So I can get an answer for that. But as far as the elementary food drive, they're connected to Montague Catholic Social Ministries and their Food Distribution Center.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Did I see another hand? Heather?
Yeah, I just don't want to, I forgot to mention to the, mentioned this before, but I would love to have a debrief of our meeting with the students on Friday. It's not in our agenda, but I don't know if we want to wait till next week. I don't know when a good time for that would be. I don't know if it fits in somewhere. I just don't want to forget.
I know. I was wondering if we could, the agenda lists it as discussion of scheduling meetings with them. I didn't know if we could sort of pretend we didn't focus on the word scheduling and accidentally have a little conversation. If not, we certainly will do it next time because those are really important meetings with students and they're really helpful. Thank you. Thanks again, Sina. Okay, I think we're ready for the superintendent's report, Brian.
So if I could, I know this is stealing a business item away, but I wanted to take the opportunity to recognize two students tonight who have joined us. So if I could ask Paige to throw herself on camera and her family, as you know, we've met Paige before. And Jane and High School Principal Christopher Barnes and I joined Paige and her family at the Franklin County Tech School last week to recognize her as the winner of the Superintendent's Award for Academic Excellence. And I also wanted to say congratulations to Paige Schule, who has qualified for the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship for her outstanding performance on the Math, Science, and English Language Arts MCAS exam. So congratulations, Paige. And I know Paige is now thinking, originally, her first choice was going to be the University of Massachusetts. And so that would come in handy, but she's begun to explore some other schools as well. And so I will wish her the best of luck in getting into all of the schools she hopes to attend. And if you're able to take advantage potentially of the scholarship money, that's great, but well done, Paige.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to take the opportunity to recognize Olivia Stafford this evening. I'm pleased to introduce the second of the two members of the Class of 2022, receiving the National School Development Council Award for Academic Growth and Student Leadership in Learning, Senior Olivia Stafford. Olivia is an outstanding student who currently ranks third in her class with a grade point average of 4.35. She's maintained a place on the High Honor Roll all four years of high school and has done so while taking the most rigorous courses, including Advanced Placement Calculus. Her achievements and dedication to learning have earned her membership in the National Honor Society, where she also serves as the Group Secretary. And Olivia has also earned the highest honors recognition of math of excellence in math and science from the Women's Society of Engineers. Olivia is a very well-rounded student. She's a key member of the state championship softball team. And as co-captain of the girls' volleyball team, helped lead her team deep into the state tournament, which is why Olivia couldn't join us back in November because they were down in Westport throwing a shutout at a, at a school that was higher seeded than us. Olivia has also volunteered for Musica Franklin and gutted out pumpkins for students at Sheffield Elementary School. And in addition to her leadership role in the National Honor Society, Olivia has also been selected to serve as Secretary of her graduating class. Olivia hopes to attend Westfield State University and major in mathematics and continue on her study of Spanish. We're very proud of Olivia, whose academic achievements and contributions to our school community are really a model of resilience and perseverance. Congratulations to Olivia and her family.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very well deserved. Thank you, Olivia. As I mentioned, the Helping Hands Leadership Council, student fundraising, basketball games that I already discussed will also be sent out. The information will also be sent out in the superintendent's newsletter and posted on the school website. The Turner's Falls High School Musical Groups, just the high school, on Friday, December 13th, will visit the upper elementary schools, and they will perform at Gill Elementary School at 10:00 AM and have another performance over here at Sheffield Elementary at 1:40 in the afternoon. I wanted to say thank you for Alyssa Camo, for coordinating with the principals and some of her colleagues at the school to make those events happen so that some of our younger students get an opportunity to see, get a look at the arts as they're well-developed by the high school students. In terms of our weekly COVID public health reporting, I'm sure that for those of you who have been following the data across Franklin County, the, the numbers of, the case counts are higher than they have been since the beginning of the pandemic. For us, we're, I think we are tied with, here in Montague, in the town of Montague, tied with our highest case counts, as well as our percent positivity, which is at 4.75%. The town of Orange now, sitting with 93 cases in the last two weeks, has a staggering 11.35% positivity. And so it's really clear that the virus is a presence out here in the community, in each of our communities, and we're hopeful that we might see those numbers begin to decline at some point in the near future. The CDC obviously still ranks Franklin County as a high risk of transmission. I wanted to provide a little bit of a happy food service update that I checked in with Mr. Mercardle at the beginning of the week, and it appears as though the long Thanksgiving break has allowed for our largest product provider to decrease the total number of days. At the last school committee meeting, I reported that it took approximately six days for orders to be returned to the school, which was having an impact on our ability to get food out and really had to change our planning. Those orders used to come in the following day, so they typically be called in at 2:00 in the afternoon, and they would typically come in at like 6:00 or 7:00 the following morning. However, Mr. Mercardle reported that Thurston has been in touch with them. And since the break over the Thanksgiving holiday, it appears that they've caught up and they're now down to just three days. And he's hopeful that the extension of the holiday break in December and into January will allow them to be back on track for getting orders to us again within a day. I also wanted to announce, although we'll, we'll bring her to a meeting in January when she starts, but that we've completed the process in our Assistant Principal search and will be appointing Kristen Schreiber as the next Assistant Principal at Turner's Falls High School and Great Falls Middle School. She currently works in the Mohawk Trail Regional School District, and she's going to join us to begin working with us on December 29th. So she'll get a few days of orientation in before she's formally introduced to all of the students. And that's it.
Thanks, Brian. I'd like to again, just to thank, congratulate Olivia and Paige for all their accomplishments and thank them and their families for joining us. I think I tried to say that when I was accidentally muted, which does sometimes happen. And I apologize for the glitch there, but thank you all so much for joining us and we appreciate all your accomplishments, ladies. Thanks.
And you're welcome to hang around, but we purposely moved this upfront so that you wouldn't have to stay for the entire meeting because it, you know, school committee meetings might not be as exciting as some other things that you can do, like AP Calculus homework, so.
Right. We'll, we'll try to be interesting, but no guarantees.
So if we don't see you later in the meeting, have a great night and again, congratulations to both of you.
Thank you. Next, we have Business and Operations Report. Joanne?
Okay, we are working on the fiscal '23 budget. We've received all of the requests from principals and department heads. I'm just compiling that into the budget spreadsheet. We're going to work our budget based on the the revenue estimate that I had given you at the last meeting. And so we'll see how close our expenses come to that as we put it all together. I've given you some dates for the next meetings. I don't have the date that we'll be meeting with the town yet. We normally get together with the both towns finance committees. And I know, I believe they're talking about that at their meeting tomorrow night. So for now, our preliminary budget presentation will be on January 11th for School Committee. And then on the 18th, we get together for a working session where we go through the line-by-line details of the budget, and then you vote the preliminary budget on the 25th of January. Our state aid numbers usually come out toward the end of January, I believe. And so we sometimes don't have them for your initial vote on the 25th. So we'll have to see when those numbers are coming out. I have a couple of budget transfers for you, a couple of months of budget transfers. And those are really just for your review. When we are moving things between budget categories, we bring those to you and ask you to vote those. So I have January, August, and September budget transfers just so you have the detail of everything that we have transferred from one line to another. If anything has moved from one category to another, you did previously approve those. Then I have two capital requests, one for the town of Montague, one for the town of Gill. So we can talk about the town of Montague one first. That's a much larger request. So no matter what's going to happen with that building, we need to do something about these floors. Our hallway floors are cracking and the wax is the only thing holding these things together. So, you know, we're keeping the wax on it to keep it sort of encased. But the cracks underneath there are, it's pretty bad. The cracks on each tile is worse in all of those high-traffic areas than it is in the classrooms. The classrooms, the tiles are lifting and cracking, which is a different problem. But we can encase that with the carpet like we did in a couple of problem rooms last summer. So in order to take care of the asbestos abatement and then the floor replacement with the seamless floor in all high-traffic areas, the hallways, the all-purpose room, cafeteria, and the nurse's office, a couple of those small offices, the estimates that we have for the, for the project management, the abatement, and then the floor replacement are listed there for you on the article. So 4,300 for project management, 1,008,900 for the abatement, and 109,450 for the floor replacement. And then the carpeting for the classrooms and a few offices, it's about $3,200 for carpeting a classroom, and then about 1,200 or 1,800 different size offices. So the entire cost of the project, I added a contingency on there because we do have to go out to bid and the prices can come in higher or lower depending on competition. So the total cost of this project would be 285,000. Now, if you remember, abating the entire building would be closer to 400,000, 450,000. And then, you know, then we would have to consider where do we put all the furniture? Where do we put all the stuff that's in the building? So abating just the hallways, the, in those large rooms, allows us to put, keep all the doors closed to the classrooms and keep all the supplies and furniture in those rooms. So we don't need to have storage to store every single thing in our building, which that was a complication in Gill. But in Gill, last summer, we ended up only abating the rooms that had asbestos floors, and we did not replace the tiles for the floors that were not asbestos. They had some rooms that were not asbestos, some that were asbestos. And so we put everything in the rooms that had no asbestos so we could clear out all the other rooms, do the abatement, do the floors. And then this summer, they'll take everything out of those rooms that did not have asbestos. So those floors can be replaced this summer. And so for Hillcrest, we would go out to bid and hopefully get this project completed over the summer as well. So that would be 285,000 to go to the capital request for the town of Montague. And that will need a vote from you. I can do the second one, which is the town of Gill. So this is a building management system, so it's a computer that runs our heating system, basically, and the software behind that. So if you remember, a couple of years ago, I think we, we had a capital project for about $90,000 for basically the same thing at the high school and middle school. So this would be for the Gill Elementary School, it's $10,000. It's replacing the computer and the software management program that was installed when the Siemens project took place. It might have been 12 years ago, 15 years ago. I'm not sure when that took place. So we will need a vote to send this to the town of Gill. And then I have the warrant, but we'll do that when you get to the warrant.
So then we'll have to say with you, Joanne, we will, we'll take questions now if anybody has any, but we'll do the actual voting during the business part of the meeting, if that's okay.
That is fine.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Joanne? Jennifer?
Hi, thank you. The, for Montague, the $285,000, that's, sorry, I missed, that's to redo the floors?
Right. So the Hillcrest floors, last year, we ran into where tiles were lifting and.
Yeah, I did hear all that. I just couldn't, I didn't remember what the, so the solution is to re-tile them.
Right. It would be to obey all the hallways and the all-purpose room, the larger rooms, abate that, remove all the asbestos, and then put down a seamless floor all over those areas.
Oh, cool. And when we do giant projects like this, you, I assume there's a very consistent RFP process, right?
Yes, we will go out to bid for this.
Okay, so this is an estimate based on something, some other estimates that have been done in the past?
Nope, we called in vendors to get estimates. So, you know, when they say quote or proposal, we won't just call them and say, yep, we're ready to go forward. We will actually put this together into a bid and we'll go out to bid.
So the 285,000 was like what you would consider a reasonable cost based on the research that you already did?
Yes, and all the quotes for all these different pieces are included in your packet as well.
Gotcha. Okay.
Quote from Compass, which is the asbestos abatement vendor, and they're giving us a quote for this area with 108,900. So we have actual physical quotes for each and.
I see it now. Sorry about that. Yeah.
That's okay.
Awesome.
Anyone else have anything for Joanne? Okay, thank you, Joanne.
You're welcome.
Next item on our agenda is the School Committee Reports, which is the Warrant Subcommittee Approval. This case, we have one accounts payable warrant to vote. It is number 3215, dated 12/8/2021. It's in the amount of $114,520.98. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Mike?
Second.
Second, Heather. And we will need a roll call vote as typical. Jennifer?
Yes.
Cassie? I think Cassie had to step away briefly. Heather?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And myself. Yes, thank you. Moving on to the business section of the meeting, the first was recognition of senior awards, the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship Award recipient. And we did do that during Brian's report. Paige joined us for that, as did her family, which was very nice, and we want to mention that again. The second item is a field trip approval request. Brian, if you could discuss that for us?
Sure, the field trip request, and I apologize for this, it came to the committee, or I'm sorry, in bringing it to the committee, the, the field trip has already taken place, but the field trip was in Connecticut. Everybody made it back safe. But I did want to make the committee aware that David Smith had taken a group of students, Paige was actually one of the students as part of a course that they're taking, which is a field-based study course on the geography of the Connecticut River Valley. And this was the culminating project that the, Mr. Smith put it in with ample time. But during the course of the month of November, it got held up in the nurse's office because of all of the pool testing, the contact tracing, various cases. And so the nurses naturally took safety and put it up front. And it came to me, really, the day of our last school committee meeting. So I didn't have the opportunity to get it in. It came actually that evening when I had pulled it out in the office. So I needed to put it on tonight's agenda just to make the school committee aware. I didn't want to have that hold up, you know, students being able to go on, on this visit.
Any questions? So I think what we probably need to, Bill?
Yeah, where are they going, Connecticut? All the way down to Hammond Hackett or?
It's on the, it's on the sheet that's included in the packet. I can't remember the, Essex, Connecticut?
If I'm remembering correctly, it's Essex.
Sorry, I didn't look.
Yeah, they got back
Cool.
around 4:00 in the afternoon, 3:30, 4:00, they began arriving. They drove down in the district vans.
Yes, it's the Connecticut River Museum in Essex, Connecticut. And so I believe we actually do need to take a formal vote that we approved it. It had all the necessary signatures prior to this. So I think we'll call it whatever we need to, a retroactive. Policy does say we need to vote that now. It never used to be for just field trips unless they were overnight, I believe. But at some point within the last few years, I think we.
They added out-of-state to the, to that as well.
So I'm, we approve it.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Got a motion? Do I have a second? Got a motion? Do I have a second?
Again.
For, thank you. And we'll need a roll call as well. Jennifer?
Just one quick discussion point.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, discussion.
Right. Could we be sure that we don't do this again?
Yes.
Absolutely. Yep.
Very chagrin that it got lost in the process and um, didn't, didn't come to our attention in time. We do apologize for that.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm not sure if Cassie rejoined us yet or not. Um, Heather? Oh, Heather had to go to a meeting. Mike?
Yes.
Did I say yes?
Uh, you did now. Thank you. Uh, Nick?
Yes.
And me. Yes, thank you all. Um, the next item uh, under business is to we already discussed the capital projects. Now we will need to make motions and approve those, and I will read it. I'll read the motion that I need someone to make. Uh, the first one is uh, to vote that the Hillcrest Elementary Floor Replacement Capital Project be submitted to the town of Montague in the amount of two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars.
So moved.
Mike moved?
Second.
Jennifer seconded. And we'll need a roll call for that as well. Jennifer?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And myself. Yes, thank you. And the second um, capital request. We need a to vote that the Gill Elementary Building Management System Replacement Capital Project be submitted to the town of Gill in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
All moving.
Bill, thank you. Second.
Mike, did you just second it?
Thank you. He was just so quiet. I just, I'm writing and trying to look and listen. It's complicated for me. Any discussions about that? Okay, roll call. Jennifer?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And myself. Yes, that's unanimous also. Thank you. Uh, moving on to the next part of our agenda. We have um, appointment for open Montague School Committee seat. I have a suspicion we're not going to appoint anyone this evening. Sabrina, did we receive any letters of interest by yesterday? No. Okay, thank you. I I didn't think so. I checked yesterday earlier. Um, in that case, I would just like to remind anybody who's listening and also remembers that we do have an open Montague seat on the school committee that's available at the present. Um, if anyone is interested, if you know of anybody who might be interested, all they need to do is send a letter or an email of interest to the superintendent's office, Cracker Avenue. Um, we will try to put it on our next agenda, so we will make the date. It needs to be received by the day before, so I'll just consult my calendar, make sure I've got it right. Will need to receive it by December twentieth. Any letter of interest for the open Montague School Committee seat? And then we will put it on the agenda to hopefully vote someone in on December twenty-first. And I will again ask uh, the reporters from the Montague Reporter and the Greenfield Recorder if they will put that notice in the paper, which they have so generously done when we've needed it before. Thank you. Next is discussion of remote in-person school committee meetings. We have not received any other information that would make meeting in person um practical at this time, particularly given the numbers in the community, not having community meetings in the building of people who don't need to be there is probably still a good idea. And the mask mandate, et cetera, um, would make it much harder to understand us. Sometimes the computer isn't easy, but I think it's still easier than a mask and a microphone. So we're going to go on that basis. We
We lost your sound, Jane.
Heard, correct? I think the whole thing was out. Um, we'll continue to livestream our meetings as often as possible. Most of the time, MCTV is able to carry them live. We'll also offer that anyone who would like to may um, access in the Zoom audience. We welcome members of the audience, members of the community to do that as well. Anyone else have any thoughts on that? Okay. Um, discussion about addressing issues of equity. Uh, Brian?
Actually, um, I was gonna invite Jean, uh, who has been working at the high school to um help put together the viewing, uh, the way the school's going to approach showing the the film, I am not a racist, am I? To students at the high schools, you remember last year. Um, staff had the opportunity to view it and uh, this year. Um Jean will share the plan at the high school to um, get the viewing out to students.
Hi, Jean.
Hi, everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. I have a short just presentation. Can everyone see that okay?
Yes.
All right, I'm just gonna put it in present mode. So as as Brian indicated, um last year, there was a film showed, this is the image of the film, the I'm not racist, am I? Um, and there was a screening of this film at professional development time for our faculty and staff at the middle and high school. And um, this is just a quick description of the film. Um, so over the course of one year, a diverse group of remarkable teens and their families plunges into a year-long journey to get at the heart of racism. Through some tense and painful moments, we see how these difficult conversations begin to affect their relationships and ultimately challenge them to look deep within themselves. By the end of their time together, we'll see these courageous young people develop strong bonds, a greater resolve, and a bigger, more significant definition of racism than any of us ever imagined. And Point Made Learning is the production group um, that puts this together. So to give you an overview of the plan, um, so last year faculty and staff viewed this during a professional development day. And at that time, interested faculty and staff signed up um, to be facilitators for showing the film this year with students. So at the start of this year, uh, it's a voluntary group of faculty and staff at the um, middle and high school. They call themselves the racial justice group and met to start kind of this plan um, and process for providing the screening for students. Um, so the group has met a number of times this fall. Um, we've had some kind of subgroups meet as well to kind of dig into this a little bit more. Um, but overall, we determined that the screening of the film would occur for ninth through twelfth graders. And faculty and staff who had wanted to sign up to be facilitators took part in an online training. So what um, Point Made Learning provides is called Look, uh, Look Deep, Look Deeper. And it it goes through each component of the film and it uh, has a reflection piece for the participant. And then kind of a suggestion for facilitation. So we had um, eighteen adults go through this training. And then though that group met with a um, person from Point Made Learning, one of the producers, and did some additional reflection and training. It was a Zoom live workshop um, to kind of build on facilitation techniques. Um, and two faculty members, Jess Kula-Curtis and Faith Clum have taken the lead um, in training a small group of students. We have about ten um, high school students who also went through this, that training. Um, what um, Jess and Faith did was they kind of broke it down a little bit more so that there was more discussion, more pr- kind of more uh, practice eh, of what facilitation might look like. And so the plan, um, and I'll talk about it in a moment, but the plan is for those students to act as facilitators slash kind of, um, you know, support systems for their peers in this, in this viewing. So we're going to screen this film on January sixth. So we screened in the afternoon on, it's a Thursday, and we're working as a group to create an adjusted schedule for the high school. So they'll have kind of a morning um, of classes, and then we'll do this afternoon uh, experience, um, this afternoon experience. So they'll spend their afternoon with their advisory group. So the idea behind this is that they've already started to establish kind of a core group in their advisories. Uh, their advisory practices that they're already in place have a lot of reflection and and, you know, honesty and and being able to share. So we've kind of already have that um, in place. And so each faculty and staff who is trained along with the advisor teacher and that trained student will lead discussions and follow a protocol while watching the film. So the protocol includes pausing at particular points to allow for discussion, processing, and reflections. So that will happen on the sixth, um, and then there'll be some follow-up. This, you know, it's a vital experience, but it's also a challenging topic. So students will have an opportunity to continue discussing the film and future advisory classes as well as debrief of counseling staff if needed. Um, and um, almost all of our counselors were, went through the training um, and will be facilitating, so they'll have a, an in-depth kind of understanding of the, the film itself. Um, and really, the essence is to provide uh, a chance for students to reflect on their own experiences, provide a brave space for dialogue. Uh, and, you know, facilitator's role is to manage the room and provide food for thought as students take in this content. Um, and so the idea is moving forward that each year, this facilitation of this video becomes part of the ninth grade advisory curriculum. Um, we went back and forth of talking about whether we were gonna have our eighth graders take part in it um, or sixth or seventh, and we really felt like it was most appropriate for nine through twelve at the moment, and that we wanted to then turn this into a yearly thing for our ninth grade students. So that is the plan, and I'll stop sharing my screen if anyone has any questions.
It's not a question per se, but I I was able to view the film myself last year. It's very well done. It's very impressive, and I think it, um, the way it's being um shown with uh, opportunities for facilitators, for discussion for the students, I think that really sounds like a process that should be most helpful.
Yes, it's a very, it's very dense, and there's a lot of um, components to it where uh, it's eye-opening, and I think a lot of um, having our, a number of teachers trained and the students felt like they didn't necessarily want to be like upfront facilitating, but in their groups, they felt like, okay, they've seen it, and they'll be able to kind of give examples of how they first felt when they watched it. Um, so less of like a, like, front-of-the-room facilitator and more of a, a, a um, a peer-to-peer support system because they've gone through the training themselves.
That absolutely makes sense. I think a, as traditional facilitator for this sort of thing should be a, a staff member, an adult. But having the peer-to-peer work, I think, will be really valuable.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Bill?
I just want to thank the uh, number of people that were willing to participate and also encourage, um, I know this addresses pretty much where, where you might be at, at a particular time, but in terms of getting this message or this whole um, approach to life down to the youngest age is really important, in my view.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thanks again, Jean. That's very helpful.
Yeah, thank you all.
Thank you, Jean.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion about scheduling a school committee meetings with students. We were able to have a meeting last Friday with the student council. I believe it's the E-Board, the Executive Board, the members who met with us. Um, and and meetings with the students are really always so helpful. It's so important to get the perspective of the students in the schools. And we'll continue to do that as often as works for them. Brian, did you have any more information on what times or days in general that work best for them to schedule it? I know Friday, it was during gap, I believe.
Yeah, it was during gap. They, um, we haven't had any further discussion. They're gonna be bringing it up like, again, at their next um student council meeting. Uh, or the next E-Board meeting, either one, but um they haven't had the opportunity to have any further discussion about it yet. As uh, Sina had indicated, they really were, are working on trying to put together you know, another nice school-wide uh, week of events for the winter, and of course, they have to take into consideration all, they want to be able to get it to us as quickly as possible, so um, we can have it reviewed by the Board of Health, so that if they, you know, they want to be able to pull off a dance, we're probably not going to be doing an outside dance in the middle of January. And so we want to make sure that our Board of Health is on board. Um, I have some ideas about how we might be able to do it in a way that you know, really makes ventilation safe, but um, obviously, we're gonna need that approval, so I think that gap period uh, one day a week might be best for them because they have, um there are things that the group, many members of the E-Board are meeting with other groups that they're part of during launches now. So that time might work really well for them and going forward. Um, so to, you know, at least once a month, I'm sure Beth can give us some time, and I'll check in with Beth, Beth Forton, um, this week at the high school.
Okay, and refresh my memory, gap is always at that same time of day?
It's nine, ten to, I think, nine thirty-eight.
Okay. Is it every day or only?
It is every day, so it might not always fall on a Friday. I know that they do their meetings are usually held during gap on Mondays, and so Monday is definitely a day that they're not gonna they're not gonna offer up for meeting with school committee at that time because they need that for their own meeting time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments about that? I think just a quick comment, we'll try to cover it in our next agenda more fully, but it was just, it was so short notice in terms of getting it onto the agenda, but it was a really valuable meeting. It was really good to get the students' input, you know, having been through such unusual times during COVID as as we have had, and then getting back to what might be sort of normal now for the students, which I think those of us that aren't students, as much as we try, can't really understand how different and difficult it, it has been for them. But we will certainly, you know, continue to talk and listen and and hope they will help us understand what, what else they need and do it to the best of our ability to provide it.
Can you, uh, what was the venue? In person or Zoom?
No, it's Zoom, and um, the students were, I believe, in the library, it appeared to be, in at a table. And so that, and we were at our own residences, so we saw the group of students as a group. And they saw each of us individually, I guess. I don't know what they saw, but I know what we saw.
Yeah, they could they, they up on the screen, they could see, basically, you know, if, if the whole committee happened to be there, they'd see what we were seeing on the screen. So it looks just like a, a regular Zoom call for them. Um, and then uh, Tina sets it up, so there's a pretty powerful microphone out in front. How was the sound? You were able to hear the kids, okay?
It wasn't bad, but it still is challenging. I mean, they wore their masks as they need to. You know, they need to be masked, and they certainly were, but at times, sometimes it was hard to hear. And I know sometimes they were trying to project as best they could with a mask on, and as we found from other things, trying to speak to project your voice with a mask on makes it kind of odd in terms of breathing.
Yep.
It really gets a little tricky. Yeah.
Okay, we'll work with them on that. You know, we'll have, you always can prompt the students to step closer to the microphone if you needed to hear something better, you know, on an individual basis.
Yeah, I'm not sure where the microphone itself was. Could you tell, Mike?
It's pretty, Tina usually keeps it, you know, it it can extend reasonably far from the television. Um, because I use that venue to do the training uh, with the active bystander students, and it was presented the same way. So one of the, one of the great advantages of um having gotten that money to purchase a bunch of technologies, we now have this teleconferencing technology, and we really should be using it, and having the opportunity really to use it with students is great.
Yes, and um, Mike, Heather, and I were able to attend the Zoom meeting with them.
Good.
That was just a li- a little tricky for me because you didn't know who was talking for a second, so I was tracking. That was just a little tricky for me because you didn't know who was talking for a second. So I was tracking, okay, who's talking now? So I missed a little bit of something. So it was as much me as it was the technology.
Right, we don't get to see lips move with a mask on. And also, sometimes it's hard because for most people listening, part of listening is watching the lips. It is a big part of actually listening, I've discovered. But it was, it was very generous of them to meet with us and and share their ideas. That was very helpful. Thanks.
Yeah, without any of the stuff, it was very thought provoking. I think that we'll end up with some interesting conversations as a result of it. Look forward to discussing it.
Yes, thank you. Jennifer?
What is the proposed cadence for such a meeting and how far in advance will we be scheduling it? I ask because I would like to attend. But generally, my time is very tightly booked, so the more heads up, the better.
Right, and I, I think that's a great suggestion because it was really short notice this time. I think we were trying to get it in as quickly as possible and figure out their schedules, but now that we know that they feel the gap period is the best, it won't be on a Monday because they have another meeting. So perhaps if we could even try to schedule it, you know, several weeks or a month ahead.
I'll check with Beth to see if we can just schedule them out through the rest of the year. If there's a time date that they can commit to for the rest of the year so that we, you know, so that we're aware.
Yeah, I mean, I think some consistent cadence would be great. I don't know what that is. If it's four weeks, six weeks or whatever it is, but I don't know.
Just that's great. Yes, if we could have a set schedule, that would be very helpful for everyone. Okay, thank you. If we do have enough members that can be present to make a quorum, then we will just post it as such, just so that people know we might have a quorum there. But thank you. Any updates from the Six Town Regional Planning Board?
Yeah, I should just mention that the forums were held in the various towns. The board certainly appreciates the number of faculty that participated in the forum at Gilmontague. So thank you to all of them for their interest and hopefully they'll pass information on. Some of the forums didn't have a lot of attendance, but it is what it is. Surveys will be going out shortly, I believe, probably. Brian has a connection to that, any surveys that are going to happen. And we look forward to the next six months to see how this progresses through the next grant cycle, I believe it would be. That's it for me.
Thanks. Brian, anything on that?
I haven't heard back since the forums and so I I would just be waiting to, you know, get an email from Greg to see when next meetings are going to be held for the group and I would assume he'll reach out to me to send surveys out to the, to the community. So as soon as I know, we'll be sending those out.
Okay, thank you. And the last item under business is a report on the MAS S MASC joint conference that was held at the end of the first week in November, the third through the fifth, I believe, and Ryan attended, Jennifer attended, I attended, and Kathy was able to attend remotely, which they had available this year. It was a lot of material covered during the workshops and the general sessions. It's hard to give people an accurate idea of all of what was going on, but we thought perhaps if we just gave sort of a short sentence or two about each of the workshops we attended, that might be helpful. And Jennifer, I'm not sure if you want to report at this time on the resolutions as well. You were our delegate. We can wait for that another time if that's easier.
I mean, they all passed. It was. Yeah, it was interesting to participate. There were a lot of good questions. Yeah, I mean, just to speak about the whole experience, I am super happy that I attended. I also haven't had yet the time to really sort of decompress all of the the info. And I know that the videos are available at least until February. So once this I'm, you know, working a couple of jobs and going to school. So in January, it is my hope that I can sort of review my notes and reflect back. And I know that'll be late to deliver, but I'll happily give some sort of a report after I've had time to really sort of synthesize that information if that's okay.
Oh, no, I think that's fine. It is a lot to, you know, report on if someone hasn't been there, but I think a bit of information probably a little bit later as well as some now is a good way to do it. It is a lot.
I mean, it was really cool to see, I I will just say one more thing, which is that it was really cool to see the impact, the sort of positive impact on both students and participants, but their, you know, superintendents or principals, folks who are making differences in lives and lives who are, you know, on both sides, both students and educators. I just, it was, there was a lot of sort of deep, I didn't expect to, I thought it would be more sort of you know, intellectual or like, you know, boring, honestly, like I thought there'd be more like formal information about how we do this and that and this, but it was actually very emotional. And it was, it was very inspiring and I'm very happy that I attended.
I think that that's a great point because it is, I thought that at several points there was a especially because a lot of the information was on how districts dealt with all the issues because of COVID, how the staff, how the students dealt with it. We had student speakers that were just amazingly impactful. We had the the teacher of the year for Massachusetts spoke again. Very, very impressive information as well as just, you know, a good insight into how how major the changes were that had happened. I think what, and Brian and I had talked about it as well, just giving a bit of information. So I I have trouble being short-winded, but I'll do my best to just give you a few highlights. I'll begin by saying the days are set up so that there are several general sessions where everyone is invited at the same time to a primary speaker or speakers. The other sessions generally have between three and five choices of sessions that you can choose to attend for an hour and a half, an hour and forty-five minutes approximately. And what we try to do when there's more than one of us there, we try as a group to choose different workshops when possible, so that often at the same time, we can have been to two or three different ones. So that we're not all at the same one all the time. The, we also, just a little aside, the the Mass Association of School Committees has a board that helps make the decisions about what's offered. They have a board that comes up with the resolutions, all those things. And the state is divided into eleven, ten, I'm sorry, ten districts. So that the school committees in this area are considered to be in District Five. So the other thing that happens during that large session is we have district meetings. So District Five, we met, we were able to meet with representatives of other school committees in our area. And then usually together, that district group sets up a workshop or two during the year in person when it's non-COVID and I believe it's has been somewhat remote during COVID. So that's another way that we can connect with other members. Just a couple of the sessions that I always try to go to the policy update session because our policy manual needs updating all the time. And having been through COVID, we haven't been on it as much as we should. But they especially covered new and post pandemic issues and gave us a list for the policy subcommittee to review and bring to the full committee once we have. I think our, I think we're in a better position in some ways because a lot of committees went through and changed specific policy wording because of COVID rules. Whereas we, we tried to make a more general policy that explained the changes within the policy. So we didn't have to go through each one. And I think that'll make it a bit easier not to have to go back and rewrite them. The second session I attended was a systems model that targets the literacy achievement gap, particularly elementary education. This one was phenomenal because that is really one of my, was one of my major areas of interest when I was a teacher. And it was very well done and it looked at elementary reading as a skill and using a tiered system for all students to be able to learn to read and write more proficiently. And I think from that, the insight, the most interesting statement that I wrote down and underlined was made by one of the presenters saying, the ability to read and write is an equity issue. It is so critical that all students are able to access the same information and the same learning to be able to read and write successfully. It becomes critical. The general session was about school districts at the center of polarized community debates, which has arisen a lot since the beginning of COVID and continues focusing on civil discourse. And again, the phrase that I liked from there was our job is to defend people who have no political power. We are representing our students. They don't have any political power. So our job is to make sure that they have what they need. The next session was on public engagement. School committee meetings as well as the possibility of doing webinars, small group chats when possible. Session four was promoting students' social and emotional well-being. Again, they explained it in terms of a multi-tiered approach. What kinds of things teachers in the classroom can do to help all students that might be still working under the effects of what COVID did in terms of their learning and their emotional well-being. Then to move on to a targeted support group for students that need more support in that area and an intensive support where necessary. It's why there are adjustment counselors, a lot of other work that can be done. And it was also, the point was also made that adults in the district need support from having dealt with all the issues that came up with the education during that time. Session five was proactive communication, telling your district story effectively, which pretty much explains itself. The next general session was about amplifying student voices during complex times. And that was where we had the student speakers, some high school students, giving a firsthand account of how socially and emotionally difficult COVID was for students. And I think it made a huge impact. And again, underlined all the support that students need, the systems that need to be in place. I think that's enough for one session. I think that only brings us through till their first day and a half. So we still have more. And that was just what I went to see. So Brian, anything at the moment that you'd like to?
Yeah, I think that, you know, I I'll share just, I'll be a little bit more brief in mind because Jane and I did, we went to the tiered approach one together. And that that one was somewhat validating for for us in in that we have a number of programs and structures in place to support students, whether it's curriculum or interventions. Supporting all families through a lens of equity was also really validating because a lot of the a lot of the information that was brought out there that we're fortunate to have, you know, Diane Ellis really taking the lead and working very closely with Stacy Langneck and Jimena Cabeza de Pareja in in doing a lot of the community outreach that larger and now smaller school districts are trying to pull together the the human resources and the skills and the talents that we already have here in the district. And we're doing a better job of reaching families who might not be as well connected here in the district. That's not to say that we should rest on our laurels, but continue to work harder. But that one was particularly validating to see what's already in place. Handling sexual harassment and misconduct complaints, although that sounds like it would be really dry, was actually, the presentation itself was not terribly useful or interesting. However, the resources that came along with the presentation are great because that's directly related to the policy that school committee just voted ACAB. The various trainings that administrators need to go through and the resources to get them to the trainings. And also some discussions about how the coordination of the systems for investigations are often being shared between school districts because smaller school districts don't have enough administrators. I think the most interesting one, also anti-racism in practice was a really good one in terms of validation that a lot of what they talked about is the work that the second, second at the was done at the secondary level over the last couple of years and now is being done at the elementary level. They get some good activities and so forth. Do have to say the most interesting one to me was something called the Calculus Project. And the Calculus Project, somebody who's in my new superintendent's cohort eleven, James Jett, is part of that. And he's the superintendent in Milton, Massachusetts. And he and a couple of colleagues in in a couple of districts around the state have put together a program to increase access to advanced mathematics coursework to underrepresented student populations. As I've mentioned before, very often only those students who have strongly advocating parents or parents that really highly value education are the ones who end up, you know, being selected to take algebra in eighth grade and therefore are the only ones who are going to have the foundation skills to allow them to get into advanced placement calculus when they're seniors. So this had a structure in place where students were recruited at younger ages. And they began to do mathematics, advanced mathematics, summer programming. And the interesting part of this, to, one of the more interesting parts of this to me was the high school students in the junior and senior, in their, going into their junior and senior year, if they meet particular thresholds, they are actually hired to teach the lower grade level students during the summer programs. And so there's a feed loop. And I love the idea of, you know, bringing something like that to our school district. And so, you know, I'm going to try to get that information from James. I did drop him a handwritten note email, but I got to wait until I see him in January to get the materials from him. They didn't have any materials there, but I'd really like to explore that as potentially as part of our summer programming. But yes, I think the only downside was one, one lunch where, where the raviolis were not really good. And I also thank, thankfully drove drove out quite early. I called Jane about five minutes before the the overall session was going to begin. And I actually drove to a hotel in Falmouth that the the principals and superintendents normally have their conferences at. And this is in Hyannis. So I was about twenty minutes away as the whole program began, but I eventually made it. Outside of that, it was great.
The Cape is a little complicated and finding Hyannis is not the easiest thing, especially because they were working on the construction. I think I was detoured three different times because of construction accidents or a road that was closed. Thank goodness, VPS, or I might still be wandering around.
Stuck on the bridge.
It wasn't, it wasn't, but it definitely is, yeah, I think. And there's a lot of resources, as as Brian mentioned, the literacy information, there are a ton of resources that you could refer to, and I really do want to go to some of the sites. I think the one, the thing I want to mention to all of our school committee members is I believe everyone should be getting the emails from MASC, the Mass Association of School Committees, listing things like workshops. Listing things like workshops that are available either online or in person at different parts of the state. Um, anything like that should be coming through your school email. If it's not, please let us know, and I think then. Um, Sabrina can contact the person at MASC that's responsible for making sure that we are all listed individually. Because it shouldn't just be coming to me. Or Brian as a superintendent, it should be coming to each individual school committee member. From the the state level of MASC. And one of the upshots that came from a. Not that, something that wasn't a session at all, but it was just a discussion that uh happened among some school committee members. And we were able to pull in a, an official from the MASC. Um, all new school committee members are encouraged to go to something called Charting the Course, which really gives you. Uh, pretty much, it's a day-long workshop usually that covers a lot of the issues of of what school committee is all about. It's very helpful. But generally speaking, it's offered in areas that are not very close to us. Quite a few years ago, we were able to bring one to our district, and I think early, when I, maybe twelve years ago, I went to one in Pioneer. But otherwise, it's mid-state or eastern parts or um somewhere else, so we were able to have a long enough chat with. The person who sets up the Charting the Course workshops. And one of the school committee members got out a map on the phone and showed him exactly where we were. And why we needed it to be somewhere reasonably close, and we were encouraged that they might try to have one in Northampton. Um, perhaps in the spring. Being one that that people from our division, Division Five, could access a little more easily than somewhere else. And he uh was hopeful that he could follow up on that, and we would, we'll certainly let you know if anything develops from that. I was. Encouraged, because we've tried and it's difficult. I think the last one was in Lee, the closest one to here, which is not particularly close.
I know when I took it, it was all the way down in Lincoln.
Yeah, and some, it's Dalton, sometimes Stirbridge, uh, a variety, but we managed to try to get the message across. That there are enough school committees out here that Northampton would be doable. In fact, they even, there was a. A couple of sites that were suggested in Northampton that would be happy to host it. Uh, because it's usually a day long, so it needs to have lunch available, things like that. So we are trying to work on that to help people. Get to one of those, and I've done several, I've done it several times, even after you've been on school committee for a while, it's very informative. It's very helpful. Um, okay, uh, next item, we need to approve two sets of minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the November ninth. One and November twenty third, two thousand twenty one. I definitely need better lighting here. That looked like a different year. We don't want to go to a different year. I need a motion.
So moved.
Mike, thank you. Second. Nick, thank you, and we'll need a roll call to approve the minutes. Jennifer?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And me, yes, as well, unanimous, thank you. Our next two regularly scheduled meetings are December twenty first. And January eleventh. They will both be virtual meetings. The uh open meeting will start at six thirty. If we need to have an executive session, we'll schedule it ahead of time, and just an advance reminder. January is the month where we usually have three regular school committee meetings. Um, the midpoint one is to look intensively at the line item school committee budget. We all get the information on the budget, and we will go through it. Joanne will take us through the. The details, and people can ask questions at that time about any parts of it, so that will be a third regular meeting on it. Again, on a Tuesday in January. Okay, anything else anyone has? In that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mike, thank you.
Second.
Second, Jennifer? Any discussion of that idea? Okay, in that case, roll call, Jennifer?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And myself. That's unanimous. Thank you all very much. See you in two weeks.
Yes, you will.